All right. Excellent, okay. We call the September 29th, 2025 School Committee Meeting to Order here tonight. It is 6:01 PM. The Situate School Committee meeting is committed to providing, oh, sorry, we need you a roll call vote. We have this Limbalm remote. Limbalm?
Yes.
I will go this way, I guess, tonight. Fanlick?
Yes.
Brandellini?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
And Rupaske?
Yes.
Okay. The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. All right. Begin tonight with public comment. Anyone in person like to make any public comments, please feel free to come to the microphone. Anyone remotely, please raise a hand. Okay. Not seeing anyone in either space. Let us move on with our student report.
All right.
Look someone.
Thank you.
You are up.
Well, our fall athletic season is underway with 55% of the students participating in a fall sport. Our golf team is 12-1. Girls' cross country is 1-1. Girls' field hockey is 7-3 with one tie. Boys' soccer is 4-3, and our football team is undefeated 3-0. Situate High School is implementing our new MTSS initiative. Administration is going to use WIN and Saylor Block to help support the at-risk students identified through our MTSS process. Situate High School met with their mentor group on Wednesday to plan leadership roles for the upcoming 2025-2026 school year. One of our goals is to help support incoming freshman students. Once again, Situate High School Select Choir has been invited to sing the National Anthem at the opening of the annual convention of Massachusetts Coalition of Police. This event is held in Hyannis on Thursday, September 18th. Situate High School was recognized by Special Olympics of Massachusetts as the Unified Champion School. Thank you to Mr. Payne, Ms. Nyberg, the coaching staff, and all of our unified sports athletes for this great honor. Situate High School would like to congratulate the following students for being entered in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Students are chosen for receiving a high score in the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. So congratulations to William Kaplan, Cole Lavens, Madeline Popisch, and Wesley Roberts. For guidance news, the SHS School Counseling Department will host a presentation for parents and caregivers of college-bound seniors on Tuesday, September 30th at 6:00 PM in the library. Counselors will discuss the nuts and bolts of the college application process, including an overview of SCORE, our college submission portal, and the Common App. This event is for parents and caregivers. Counselors will present more specific information to the students through the School Day workshops this week of September 15th on individual meetings as well. Financial aid night. The SHS School Counseling Department will host an aid presentation for 9th through 12th graders, parents and caregivers, on Tuesday, October 28th at 6:00 in the Performing Arts Center. While the information is geared towards senior families applying for financial aid this year, all grades are encouraged to attend. This event will not be recorded. Preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test and National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test for the PSAT will be administered at SHS on Tuesday, October 28th for all 10th graders, and Wednesday, October 29th for 11th graders during the School Day. All 10th graders will take the PSAT free of charge, and 11th graders must submit payment online to register by Wednesday, October 15th at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do committee members have any questions or comments or thoughts for student rep tonight?
I hate to put you on the spot.
I do too. I don't want to put you on the spot, but we want.
No, I saw the sign out there that SATs are going to be held at Situate October 4th. Can you just give a little bit, I don't know if you know anything about that, but like, what's my question? When would students who want to take that sign up for that? Because it's very difficult to find local testing facilities. So could you give a little bit of your experience particularly and kind of what you know about the 4th?
Yeah, sure. So usually signing up for the SAT, like you said, it's kind of hard to find seats. But kids are always kind of dropping out and new seats are always available. So I would say if anyone wants to sign up, just be vigilant about like checking your email because they send notifications that seats open up all the time. But otherwise, I'd say just really try and get ahead of it.
If you wanted to take it October 4th, when would you realistically have to sign up?
Spring, maybe, maybe August. Yeah, probably August, I'd say, or October.
And are you taking it on the 4th?
I'm not, no, I'm not taking anymore tests.
Good for you. And there's no way, no, that's fine, that's great, no, thank you.
Thanks.
Good stuff.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, so next up, we have a new business. We have Principal Beatty, an update on the new Gates schedule.
All right. Thank you for having me tonight. I am excited to provide the committee with an update on the Gates schedule that was implemented this year. I have some slides that will guide my talking points. But just in thinking about schedules, for the last two years, as part of our school improvement plan, we've started to look at some of the structures that we have in place and kind of figure out what's the relationship between the structures we have and academic achievement, academic growth. And one important piece to that, in addition to things like curriculum and instruction, is the actual how we are using the day to provide students with opportunities to learn and to grow. So for the past two years, our instructional leadership team and our school council have looked at kind of various data sources. And what we agreed upon kind of coming into the start of last school year as we started talking about schedule models was on three very specific goals. So our goals were... I do know them, I just want to make sure. There you go, very good. So all the groups, whether it be the instructional leadership team or our school council, our big goal was to improve academic outcomes for all students. Everyone was in agreement that that should be our priority as we look at a new schedule. We wanted to allow for more flexible intervention and enrichment for all students. And we noticed that in our previous schedule, there was an inequity for students who were participating in our band and chorus ensembles in terms of accessing support throughout the School Day. So those were our three goals for design something that helps us to move forward in these particular goals. Our process was we read, we did a book study as a school. It was called "In Support of Students: A Leader's Guide to Equitable MTSS." It was published in the last two years by one of the MTSS gurus, and there's a large section of that talking about not just the process of MTSS, but using time in school to provide students with what they need. So that provided a lot of opportunity for us to look at current research as well as kind of debate and have good conversation around things that apply to our building, our students. As part of this process, we also looked at a lot of data. We looked at our MCAS data, we looked at our benchmarking data, we looked at our Lexile levels, which we received last year, we looked at our parent information, we looked at participation rates. We looked at our staffing, knowing that we wanted a schedule that would not require us to add additional staff or to lose any of our staff, so we wanted to maintain that staffing level. We visited several schools in the area, so all of our elementary schools, which have a version of kind of a support block. We visited Pembroke Middle School, Wyndham Middle School, and Cohasset Middle School, all of which have a block during the day to provide students with academic support or enrichment. Finally, our team, both the school council and the instructional leadership, designed several models. And as a faculty in some student groups, we provided input. We talked about the pros and cons of each model. We put one forward. It was adopted in terms of a vote by our staff. And then this is the year of implementation. So that's just what led to it and how it was designed. For people who like grids, this is what a schedule looks like. And I explain kind of on the next slide how this differs from the schedule we have had in the past. So big new features with this schedule is we have shorter core subject blocks. Last year, all of our classes were 63 minutes. This year, they're all 45. A difference with this is that our core classes are now meeting five days a week instead of four. So five times 45 as opposed to four times 60. And in all of the research we've done, consistency is good for kids at this age level and in terms of developmentally appropriate time for students to receive instruction. 45 minutes is a better number than 63 minutes. In this model, our specials block, students still get access to their specials, but they are on a rotating basis. So instead of having engineering for six weeks straight, they take engineering and music over the course of 12 weeks on a every-other-day model. With this particular schedule that we have this year, band and chorus have become classes, so they are no longer special things that don't fit into our schedule anywhere. What this means is that students are opting to take band and chorus as their electives. And so they are prioritized over some of the other specials we have. We're lucky at Gates because all of our specials classes are offered two years, so there's a sixth-grade version and a seventh-grade version, or a seventh and an eighth. So what that allows us to do is to say, you're taking band and you miss out on STEAM in sixth grade, we're going to prioritize your schedule so that in seventh grade, you get access to STEAM. So that has worked out well. In this model, students, all students, have a dedicated flex time. And during a flex block, they have access to extra help. They can do their homework, they can work collaboratively, they can, you know, work together on different things. They are in control of their own time. And then every student also has a WIN block, which happens three days a week for 20 minutes. And that is when they get targeted support or enrichment in a specific area based on data that we have collected. In this new schedule, we also maintained our monthly advisory period to promote social and emotional learning efforts. And we have reimagined how we're doing interest-based clubs because the feedback was very clear from students that like this was an important part of their schedule. So we still have it. It's the ultimately a week-long celebration after a series of WIN blocks. So we're going to work very hard on becoming more literate, and then we're going to run around for a week, and then we'll go back to math and things like that. So those are kind of the big key features of our new schedule. On the next slide, we talk, I talk a little bit about what WIN block at Gates Middle School looks like and is going to look like. This will be a 20-minute block where students are assigned to a very specific group based on a specific area of need where they either need support or acceleration. Every student we recognize has different learning needs. Every student will be in a very small group, most likely one to eight, one faculty member to eight students. And it's going to allow us to take a specific area of need. In this first round, we're doing literacy and math, literacy in terms of vocabulary acquisition, and supporting main idea and supporting details, reading comprehension, as well as very targeted areas in math. These will run for about six weeks. After six weeks, we will assess to see the progress our students made, and then we will reshuffle and go into kind of the next phase. This is not a free period. Students don't, you know, do their homework during this, they don't, they are getting targeted instruction, every student, whether they are at risk of not doing well, or if they are already exceeding the expectations, they will continue to be pushed. We've spent the beginning of the year collecting data from our benchmark assessment, so we haven't started our academic WIN blocks yet. We've done what we call a boot camp, where kids have learned things like how to check library books out online, how to access their counselor, what our expectations are for technology use, we've gone over the handbook, we've done bullying. So we've set a tone that this 20-minute period with small groups of students and a teacher are used to kind of help us to get on the same page with things. So we're excited, and we don't think the transition to an academic kind of, not, yeah, academic WIN experience is going to be that much of an adjustment for kids because we've set that tone that this is how we use this time. And this compared to the flex block where it is free choice and then things like that is going to allow us to kind of balance kids' need for autonomy and independence and time to do things versus we as the adults looking at data and saying, here's how we're going to move that needle in this particular area that we care about a lot. So just to wrap up, I think our kind of next steps are, with this new schedule, teachers are working really hard to adjust their curriculum and instruction. Moving from a 60-minute block to a 45 might not seem like a lot, but it's a lot, and they have to make some changes to that. We recognize that if we strengthen our tier-one instructional approaches, meaning what happens in a classroom, less kids are going to need support and intervention. So we remain committed to kind of really building tier-one, good tier-one strategies. In terms of feedback, we have intentionally not asked for feedback yet because it's too early. So we are going to, after the first round of WIN blocks, collect feedback from students, staff, and families. And ultimately, the proof will be in the data of if our kids are growing, then this is working. If we survey right now and said, you know, students, would you prefer to have five days free choice? Or I don't know if the answer is what they would be, but I think the data is going to help us to determine, is this working and what do we need to continue doing? And of course, with any schedule, this is my sixth year at Gates, every single year there have been adjustments. So we are, you know, constantly saying, how can we improve this given our circumstances for the year, the number of kids we have, the number of staff we have? So we are, will, by the end of this year, make recommendations for the following year for modifications. So that is a big overview. I will say to me that feedback I am getting from students and staff is, I'm not hearing much in terms of concerns. At first, the day one and day two was confusing, but kids have adjusted and we have signs now, so it's helpful. But that ultimately, we're excited to get the feedback as much as we are to see the data come.
Thank you so much for coming in September even to give us an initial feedback from how you're seeing it from your perspective as leader of the building. Thanks, Principal Beatty. Nice to see you. Just two quick questions. I was looking at the schedule, and it looks like the flex time is Mondays and Fridays. Is that for everybody?
Yes.
And can you just talk a little bit about like why Mondays and Fridays?
Sure. So what we, we went back and forth because that can switch at any point. But we went back and forth and said if we really want to build momentum in these WIN groups, having three days of consistent kind of, instead of having three different lessons, they're 20-minute chunks, having them kind of three days in a row. That is my prediction. My prediction is going to be that the student input when we survey is going to say, we would like our flex blocks kind of scattered throughout, and that's valid feedback. And I have a feeling that could very well be a win for students when they share that with us because right now, as the year is getting started and expectations, you know, kids are learning, the expectations of the grade level and assignments are intermittent, and we're not necessarily in full year yet. I have a prediction, come second trimester, that's when things, and that can be a very easy shift for us. And we'll see if the momentum, if having three days of WIN block in a row is getting us the results that we want. So I predict that's going to be it, and that's a piece of feedback I've heard. And honestly, that's a very easy thing to do, and if that's a win for students and they can still maintain focus, I'd love to be able to do that.
Yeah, that'll even be a good natural experiment, right?
Yes.
To get some good data for both models to see. So I love that. The other question is just more, I think it's language and curiosity. So the dedicated monthly advisory period for community building and SEL, when I hear advisory, I think planning for, I know they're in middle school, but they're planning for high school, we're getting emails about South Shore Botec. And so I'm just wondering, is it like a mixing of things in that space, or can you just talk to that?
Yeah, so I think the goal of our advisory program is for students to build community with other students, but also to develop a relationship with adults. And it's a combination of academic, community building, it's kind of that like home base type thing. We used to have it every other week, and the feedback was, we value the time, but we also, if we're going to be doing WIN blocks, I'm going to become connected to this teacher that's in front of me because I have a very small group of people. So it's a combination of everything. But this is where we implement our second step curriculum to give students with, you know, different opportunities to team build, to learn how to challenge each other respectfully. So I would say it's a combination, but it's not just a, like, let's give a PowerPoint and share news. It's definitely, I would say, targeting teamwork, collaboration, increased responsibility on those types of things.
So the traditional advising support is happening outside of that period?
I would say our school counselors, every grade has a different school counselor, and they push in to the PE and the art classes to do a lot of the like career pieces and the pathways and the, you know, if students are interested in exploring alternative places for high school, like that gets pushed and morphed by the school counselor into art or PE, which are the specials that kids have all year.
Okay. And that, do you feel like that's sufficient? Like, do you, or you feel like it's working?
Yeah, I mean, I think it is. And I think it is because we've kind of adjusted the time our school, all of our school counselors teach lessons. So instead of just relying on students to visit the counseling office when they want to, it's really more of a tier-one, everyone's getting something, and then if they want additional advising or encouragement, the counselor follows up. So I think it's, I think it's working, but always hoping for more questions.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I thought those were really helpful presentations, and you preempted a lot of my questions. I was just curious if you could put a little more meat on the bones of what IBC is going to look like. You may not know that may still be in development, but I feel like that is one of the features that kids really love, families are excited about, so I'm just curious if you know.
So as we rotate through six-week sessions of WIN block, the seventh week is always going to be a week of IBC. So we're getting rid of flex block, we're getting rid of WIN block, and doing five days of interest-based clubs, which is the same timeframe, 20 minutes, so five days of an interest. So there are going to be some shifts in that, like you can't go play roller hockey in 20 minutes. But what we've done is we've sent a survey out to students saying, you know, giving some basic information, IBCs are going to happen five times this year, they're going to be for 20 minutes, five days a week. What are some activities you would be interested in doing? Or collecting ideas? Kids are coming up with better ideas than we have. And we'll do the same with staff, you know, in the sense of connecting students and staff together. But so one session will be in November, one will be in January, so, and that way they actually can do more than one IBC too, because that was also a piece of feedback, I wanted to do them all, but.
Right. And will they still mix grades?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's nice. So you're still really keeping a lot of the same elements?
Yes. It'll look different, but those elements that, you know, really have worked and beneficial to students, I feel like we've been able to capture.
Thank you.
I just have one question. I know that one of the reasons for the schedule change was, as you mentioned, band and chorus. I would be curious, as you collected data at the end of the year, to see, maybe just a couple of years, to see if the participation in those band and chorus increases or is maintained or decreased. I would expect that it would increase, maybe some of those fringe kids, they are not going to do it because I need extra help.
Yes.
But that would be one of the benefits that would, because we dual benefit of implementing this schedule.
Yes. And we're very interested in that as well because we collected that data over the last couple of years. When a student doesn't exit interview the music program, sometimes, you know, we don't know why. This will be kind of a clean cut of this changed. Many of our students who ended up leaving the music ensemble was because they needed to prioritize academics. So this provides both. I know our sixth graders who have never experienced any other schedule before, we have 82 with them in our band right now, and that's more than we've had in a long time. And seventh and eighth, we did not lose many this year as much as we had in class. I don't have the exact numbers, but.
That's great.
I would say we are anticipating seeing more students involved now that there is dedicated time during the day where they don't need to sacrifice their academics as well.
That's great.
That's great.
And sorry I wasn't around when.
I know.
You know, it's a couple of years late, but.
Well, I appreciate your efforts on all of that. And I just have a, not really a question maybe, but just curious to see as you get more data next year, this year, just about that sort of like more of the accelerated side of things too, and as we dig into more of that and just some of that differentiated instruction that will be offered to students and what that will look like with some of the data. And then to bring that back to us and to Dr. Rab and Mr. Lynch, and to see what you need in terms of what teachers are saying and what feedback you're getting at all levels, just what instruction will look like and what materials you think the district will need and what, you know, what that kind of looks like for, you know, just our district in general, what we, you know, what you can bring back to us that, how we can support the district better for what kids need to learn more effectively and efficiently.
That's great.
You know, just curious what materials and support our learners more from that.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you for having me.
Thank you for. All right. Oh, Janice, sorry. If you unmute yourself.
Yes. I just want, I mean, I would just.
Apologies.
Just add that I love that the band and chorus are part of the schedule. Because I know historically, the kids in band and chorus always had to make a choice between getting extra help or going to the band or chorus. So I love that.
Yes, absolutely. Right. Next up, we have Mr. Backy. We have a DECA field trip. Hi.
Hello again. I'm Russ Backy. I'm here to deliver the information about the upcoming DECA district competition. Thank you, Chairperson Brandellini and Superintendent Rab and this is Superintendent Lynch. So this is our 18th year as a chapter member of an international organization, which is DECA. And DECA is a business marketing club for students within their high schools, right? And again, we've been a chapter for 18 years now, and there's a lot of different things that DECA offers for students. One of the unique things is having a district competition, which our district consists of 15 local schools in and around this area. And it gives the students the opportunity to be able to choose many different business categories that they would like to compete in. And the students have the opportunity to choose the category. I think I gave you, do you guys have a list? Okay. So on that list that I provided for you, you can see there's a list of, it's everything from accounting to business law to human resource to food service, sports marketing, entrepreneurship, apparel and accessories, travel and tourism. There's a whole litany of lists that the students can choose from based on whatever interest they have for a business/career path. The students would then choose the category. They can either compete individually or they can partner up with somebody. There's prep sessions that will do beginning in November into December. And then our district competition this year is going to be at the Marriott Quincy on January 8th and 9th. We just finalized the negotiations, those dates with the Marriott, we're still in negotiation with like the per-student cost. And a lot of that's going to work out to what they accommodate us for, meals and such. So, but the dates are locked in at this point for that competition. The other avenue that students. The other avenue that students can compete in at the district conference is relatively new this year. It was new last year. It's been modified this year is written business projects. So specifically within our DECA marketing class, they are working on year-long business project initiatives where pretty much it's, it's in essence, it's what you don't see on Shark Tank, right? So if you've ever seen the show Shark Tank, students are presenting their entrepreneurial business ideas, but it's all the work that goes into it. It's the building of the business plan, it's the idea generation. So a lot of those students are working through that now within our first few weeks of this class. And we've got some really exciting, you know, students this year with different projects. We have two projects actually, or two students that are working with Town Hall. They're acquiring a business certificate or a business license to validate their business. So they'll be in a business growth plan project, which they'll be taking to districts. The competition consists of, if it's a written project, you would present your written project to a judge. If it's one of the individuals or team events that I have provided for you, they'll list there. They'll take a hundred-question exam within their business category field. And then there's two case study role plays that they'll problem solve at the actual conference and then present to a judge for scoring. The top five in all of the categories will move on to the state competition, which this year is at the, it's at the Seaport in Boston again this year. Historically, it's always been at the Heinz Convention Center, but the Heinz is under construction. And I think we're looking at move back in there within the next year or two, once they open up. But currently, we're at the Seaport. The Seaport was great for us last year. And we're there March 12th through the 14th. The top three students that follow, top four students that qualify from states within their respective category would then move on to the final, which is the international competition. And this year, that's April 25th through the 29th, and that's in Atlanta, Georgia. I do not have any hotel accommodations for either the Seaport or Atlanta yet. They're still working through that, but but I just wanted to provide that information for you as well.
So initially, this is just for the Quincy Marriott?
Yes, this is for the Quincy Marriott. The others are pending qualification.
Okay.
Make a motion on DECA competition.
I'll make the motion, school committee vote to approve the interstate field trip to the DECA competition in Quincy, Massachusetts on Jan- January 8th to January 9th, 2026, as presented.
Second. Second one. Gates.
Yes.
Brandolini, yes. Fenwick, yes. And Limblom?
Yes.
Okay.
The clarification, if knowing the strength of our DECA team and programming, if the team would qualify for the overnight trips to and advancing the competition, would it be the committee's preference that Mr. Mackey return or that there be a write-up of the details for Georgia or wherever else? And then after hearing all the background, would that suffice for the committee to approve the trip? If there's a write-up or how would we like to handle the additional?
They usually go every year and if the kids are strong competitors, I'm I'm all comfortable with them going forward with the planning.
Yeah.
If the committee is.
Great, so I'll work with Mr. Mackey to get the specific details if it pleases the committee. And then we'll, I'll present that to you so you have all the details in line with the policy to make sure that you can check on chaperones and how many days would be missed and things like that. And then it sounds like you've heard all the background and are fine with it, so that'd be great.
I never know how much to tell you guys over this, because I feel like if it's, but I just traded, just gave it all to you and then you guys can.
Sure, no, appreciate it. We appreciate just knowing because it's exciting and the kids and you work so hard on it all. Everybody's fantastic and strong and it's great to hear all.
Yeah, our numbers were, yeah, our numbers were the biggest they've ever been last year. So we had typically, so we've had four the year before qualify for the international competition. This past year, we had eight, which is the most we've ever had before. You know, which is a relatively large number considering our our school size compared to others that qualify. So, yeah, we had some great success last year and, you know, my fingers crossed we have the same success again, so.
I think it's it's just fantastic, even a model UN friends here too and all that our students do. I mean, student reps, everything. It's like just in addition to the schoolwork and that everyone's doing, that all of these students and the work that you all do as teachers, you're also doing all of these other things with our kids. And the students are doing that too. I mean, you're writing papers and like you said, they're taking on a hundred-question, you know, competitions and writing these business plans in addition to their schoolwork and taking the SATs. And these are just massive love and beyond. So the more we here in the community can know that these exceptional humans are amongst us, it's just, you know, love it.
I would, Ms. Williams, I would just, I know that last year, we talked a little about just having an overview of all the other field trips and someone that we, that are kind of, have already been approved, just so we can, I think it's easier to see it visually.
Yes.
Because I don't know what, and I'm sure you probably have the dates of the other conferences.
Yes, I have.
So that might explain, so we can view and see how many days kids are missing and teachers and that sort of stuff. Just so we can visualize.
We'd also talked about updating form. Right, even just for, just like our book, like bookkeeping one, just so you know, it's more of a safety than just for our like.
Did you approve it? Did you see it or, you know?
Some kind of tracker.
Yeah.
A tracker, but also an updated form.
Well, we just gave it a head nod that time back in December.
It would make it easier to see, like, reminding us of the academic purpose of the trip and how many days of school are missed, you know, like, the current form is still choppy. It looks like it's been added to over time since like 1993, so.
I think it was also like, I think for us, it was also like how many staff.
Staff.
So staff's going to be out for a week. We know that, we generally, I generally think of, oh, the kids can go out for a week or whatever. And then I'm like, yeah, it actually takes staff too and how that impacts the teams that are on that trip. And we certainly haven't had an issue approving that, but I think it's just helpful to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a trip, we have a tracker that identifies where students are, which trip is out. There's a link to the specific form that was approved. So if the committee needs it, we could always add that to the folder. I'm not sure it's something that everybody needs to see, but for the, for you to be able to just know. But that is something we keep in central office. So we just know, because sometimes we have students in multiple countries and we need to know where everybody is.
Right, just for safety reasons. It should be really easily accessible to know, yes, we approved this on this date. This was who was there, these are the exact dates, times, locations, you know.
But even like that current form doesn't tell you what day of the week.
Right.
It is. And so it's like, you gotta look at the calendar or look at the month and figure out what is the day or how many days is it.
Right, just got it. Just for clarity. But the big picture details.
This has nothing to do with.
Yeah.
Your's got the detail.
More, sorry.
Procedural versus. Over all true. Competition details.
All right, perfect. Well, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, Model UN. Okay. I'm Heather Willinger.
And I'm Kelly Trares.
We're the advisors for Model UN and we're back here again to talk about our upcoming conferences this year. We have two conferences that we're planning on going to. One in Montreal, Canada, which we've been to before at McGill University. And the second in, excuse me, March at the Washington area Model United Nations Conference through George Washington University. I know we are delayed in coming to you for the first, for the first trip. We had a few snags along the way. There was some new paperwork that people didn't have and it didn't quite, the process wasn't quite as smooth as it had been in the past. We actually had planned to come before you for another conference, but by the time we got the paperwork back, that conference had been filled. So then we bumped to a different conference. And so at this point, we're here, even though we're a little bit late to the, late to the game. This particular conference goes from November 12th to the 16th. It's a pretty competitive conference where there are kids coming again from all over the world to participate in this. We actually just had a tryout the other day. And I think, I had said 70 earlier, I think we had 78 students that tried out for the Model UN program. And we will likely only be able to take about 45 to 50, just based on the size of the bus that we're planning on taking. So we're looking to take 45 to 50 students. With that, we'll take five chaperones, myself and and Ms. Trares, and then three additional chaperones as well. Students will miss three days of classes, the Wednesday for travel. And then the conference starts on Thursday. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we'll be there. Our plan, we did look into flights, the flights were not cost-effective. So we are going to plan to take a coach bus. We're still waiting to figure out exactly what bus line and details there. Once we, you know, for approval, we'll go ahead and make those arrangements. The conference host is McGill University. The accommodations is at the Sheridan in Montreal. We've been there before, it's quite a nice hotel to be in. Right now, because we don't exactly know what our transportation is going to look like, we're estimating based on things in the past around $1,000. I think in the past when we've gone, it's been about $800, but 800 to about 1,000. We've done a little bit of fundraising. They do offer financial aid for this conference as well. So hopefully, we can get, you know, some help for a few of the students that may need some additional assistance. Do you want me to go on to the second one or do you want to ask questions now? Okay, go on.
Go, yeah.
Okay. Do you want to do the second one?
Yeah, did you say?
Okay.
So the second conference, we're looking to go to DC. It's also hosted by George Washington University, so we've done this one before as well. It was a pretty rigorous conference and this one definitely had some international participants, which I think the students really enjoyed. It was one of their favorite parts of Switzerland last year. And so it's definitely not the same as Europe, but somewhat in that sense, giving them that there. We're thinking again between 40 and 45 students. We are looking to fly for this one. We found in the past, flights were pretty cost-effective, especially when we booked them earlier opposed to later. We're planning on taking five chaperones again, even though it's 40 to 45, especially with flying. We found it's better to have to air on the side, a caution of one more if possible than just the bare minimum. We don't have details yet on the conference lodging because it is pretty far out. But in the past, they offered hotels that they had plans with. And we just chose, we went two years ago, kind of the one in the closest friendly area that kids could explore and stuff like that.
I was just wondering if we still, this is a question for you, Dr. Rab, still have that line item in our budget that students can access if needed to support differing costs?
Yes, we do.
Do we do? And do you have a sense of whether that was exhausted last year?
No, it wasn't.
It was not? And do you feel like that's accessible to you as organizers?
I actually don't know how to access it.
Okay.
So I think that would be helpful to be able, because we've gone through community, you know, Community Christmas. And they've been incredibly generous, but there's a certain cap, right, of how much they can can afford to give to students when there's so much other need out there. And so that can be really challenging, so.
Especially if you have a big crew that's next to it.
Exactly.
I also noticed that the cost estimates, other than food, food incidents or sightseeing, and that is something that would add up, you know, for the kids when they're planning to go.
Because there's no, there's no, you know, like if you go to a conference, sometimes they have food and things like that, but not at any of these conferences, like, yeah, the kids go.
It just makes it, you know, another thing. And so I was just thinking about that and making sure that we.
Absolutely. Any advisor can go to the principal and ask those questions.
Okay. Right, then we'll go ahead and do that.
Oh, I just wanted to say, I should have said this is for DECA too. But I've done DECA trips, I've done Model UN trips. I've been to Canada and then the Switzerland trips here. I just wanted to vouch for like how fun these trips are. Getting on a bus with all your friends, what do they call them, the T-boffs?
Yes, the best, the best of friends forever. That's why the T-bob.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say, everyone thinks they're super fun, so.
And very educational.
And very, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, yes, that's a, that's a big idea.
And to give the, to give the kids a little shout-out, in Switzerland last year, they won the best large delegation of all the schools in the country, so they did a very good job.
I think we had about 10 or 11 individual awards. I mean, it was quite impressive. So that was very exciting, especially on the international stage, so.
Do you think that's fair, that even with the fun side of things, they do come back performing well? So it's definitely a balance.
Yeah, it's great to be able to like, you know, have what we learned in the classroom and then apply it outside of school. Like I know AP Comparative Government is a new course this year and that's, well, a lot like government, but it's more international. So especially the kids who are taking that class, they can sort of apply what they're learning outside of school, which is, which is great, I think.
I mean, clearly, if we have 75 kids wanting to be part of this. Right, you know, you're doing something very right. And so I think that's awesome, especially freshmen who are like, got to go.
And Luke, now that you're here, so I, item tonight that I've been talking about is, you know, missing school and so on. So how do you or other students handle being out of school for whatever, one, two or three days? How does it impact your learning?
Yeah, we are usually pretty good about staying on top of it. I know for Model UN trips, we're usually very busy while we're there. But I would say that we work really hard to sort of catch up afterwards. And I know our teachers sort of give us a lot of grace and help, you know, coming up with missed material. But it's, it's a lot, but it's not too much. And it's very manageable, yeah.
I, it is not uncommon to see a whole bunch of kids in the same classes that are working. You know, we're on the train in Switzerland and they're like plowing through, they're talking about their homework, right? So they, you know, any, any spare moment that they get is sort of like crammed in there on the trip. There's few spare moments on some of the Model UN trips, but definitely on the, definitely on the bus rides or train rides or what have you, they do take advantage of the extra time.
Thank you. Two separate motions.
Nicole?
I just have, I just have a question or comment about the Montreal trip, because it, I don't, I feel like it would not, wouldn't have a lot of details about, I know you've done it before, but there seems to be a lot of information missing from the planning.
I think the only thing that we don't have, because we weren't able to book it yet, was for Montreal, was the transportation and the bus company, which would then affect the cost because we weren't able to book it yet, not knowing if we had been approved to go forward with that. The other one is a little bit in terms of the conference center and lodging. They haven't released any of those details on their website yet. A lot of times, it's like six months before, so they all still have, they have last year's program up on their website still. So as soon as that changes, we can always send an update with more information.
So the lodging for Montreal is, you, you would have that?
Is that, is that the Sheridan in Montreal?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Take a motion on.
I'll make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the out-of-state field trip to McGill University Conference in Montreal, Canada on November 12th, 2025 to November 16th, 2025.
Second.
Fenwick? Yes. Brandolini, yes. Gates?
Yes.
Warkowski?
Yes.
And Limblom?
Yes.
Next one?
Yes.
Make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the out-of-state field trip to the Washington area Model United Nations Conference in Washington DC on March 16th, 2026 to March 22nd, 2026.
All right. Fenwick? Yes. Brandolini, yes. Gates?
Yes.
Warkowski?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Fenwick?
Yes, you already said.
Sorry. That's everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You're throwing me off because you're like the fifth person in the room.
I've got my eighty-eight point chips on me at the table. We're gonna gain a vote at the table.
Oh, oh.
Where you know it. Leadership report, Dr. Robb.
Thank you very much. So Mr. Lynch and I have added something to the agenda where we basically get to say whatever we want at every meeting.
I am genius.
And we can put it down there. So the first thing I'd like to talk a little bit about is an update on the Hattley School project, and that'll pretty much be a standing update at every meeting at this point. I actually visited Hattley today for my learning walk, and as we were there, they were trying to cut down trees, and the students were very excited to see the fencing up, and the cranes were literally cutting down the trees. Many students were yelling timber at the windows, it was a lot of fun. But it really speaks to the fact that we started, you know, so after all the discussions and all of the things we talked about, we've begun the project. The groundbreaking, as the committee's aware, is Monday, October sixth, and you do have in your packets the program course. You can take a look at the program, at the order events, and we're very excited. Mrs. Brandelani's been even welcoming remarks, and it should be a fun half hour. We have a combined chorus of fifth grade at both Hattley and Cushing. They're singing Viva La Vida, and they were telling you all about it today. They didn't give me a preview, so I have to wait until next week to hear it, but they're very excited to be there. We have seats for them, they're going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we actually have two fifth graders that have been chosen to hold one of the shovels. So it'll be a lot of fun to see them there. The immediacy of, in terms of the project itself, is the committee's aware that we are in the middle of a bid protest with the electrical sub bidders. The three of them are protesting each other, and that hearing with the AG's office is tomorrow afternoon at one o'clock. So the AG has made it clear that the town did not make any mistakes in its bid documents or anything like that. So I talked to town attorney today, who will be representing the town, Christopher Brown, and basically, our job tomorrow is to urge the AG to make a fast decision. At the end of the day, they're going to pick whoever electrical company they pick. We want to say to them, look, you really can't hold this off. Right now, there's a generator behind the construction trailer, I mean, that's how they're generating electricity. It's loud, it's inefficient, it's not true. So, so we have been very clear, and great for this construction, has been very clear about the impact of waiting another month for a decision. It really will hold things back, and, you know, right now, it's scheduled for substantial completion in March of twenty-twenty-seven. There's a little bit of wiggle room to April, maybe May, but we can't go much further than that. So we're really up against those deadlines to have the building completed. But it was exciting to see people on site, the diggers are there, and the cranes are there, and the trees, and the motion controls. So, fun stuff. Luke, you stepped on my big thing, I was going to talk about the Unified Champion School for the Unified Sports, but really excellent, excellent stuff. Bryn Nyberg has worked really hard with this group to get it off the ground. We have active basketball and track programs, we did a tennis pilot last year, and we're only looking to expand. So it's, it's been fantastic, and having that Champion School designation will only give us more opportunities, because it opens up just that whole conversation, Special Olympics and.
What does that mean? Can you tell us anything else about it?
I can.
Really, like an honor. She worked really hard on that, Miss Nyberg.
She did, she did.
Our district.
Yes, I'm training myself to let school committee members finish talking before I start talking. So, no, no, I'm good.
No, no, I thought, I think I did that first.
But, so this is right from the website. "The program that intentionally promotes meaningful social inclusion by bringing together students with and without intellectual disabilities to create accepting school environments utilizing three interconnected components." And this is the piece that I think that Miss Nyberg has really worked hard on. Not only the Special Olympics Unified Sports, which we've had, but in addition, the inclusive youth leadership, the students who are working as mentors, and more important even, the whole school integration. So if you went to the basketball games last year, we probably had five hundred kids in there.
Right.
You know, and I think that's the piece that caught the attention of this group, to say, hey, you know, this is not just, just Unified Sports, but we really have the whole school. And as I've been doing my learning walks, the buildings, I've been everywhere except Cushing. I think I'm going to Cushing tomorrow, so I promise I'll get there. But I've been to the other schools, and I've asked the school leadership, as they're walking me around, show me something that you don't think I know about, right? So they know that I know about the budget, I know about the windows, and I know all that kind of stuff, but they, Jenkins Windows are going in? It's awesome, they got one down, one hundred and sixty to go, we're working on. So the one thing everybody talked to me about, which I thought was really exciting, was this bridge cycle. And Mr., so you guys know all about it, I learned, I learned all about it today, it was awesome. So, what the bridge cycle is in the wind blocks, is an opportunity for our kids using the spring testing data to be immediately put into their wind blocks at the elementary level. I watched them today, you know, their blocks are put up on the board, and the kids are scattering right to their wind blocks in September. So we're putting off, not putting off, but we're scheduling the first round of benchmark testing in a couple of weeks. But what they found was, in the past, the kids would come in and sort of still be in that summer slump when they took the benchmark testing, and it was likely impacting our scores. So by doing this cycle or bridge cycle, it's really helping catch the kids up and get them ready for the first round of benchmark testing. Now, the upside of that is we'll see increased academic performance. The downside is our growth rates might go down a little bit, Mr. Lynch, because they'll start at a higher level. But that's okay, right? If they're starting at a higher level, we want to see them keep growing. What I was excited about is that they really are using the data from the spring benchmarks to create those groups. And one of the principals today even mentioned to me that, you know, sometimes even mid-group, they'll switch students. And she had one student come to her last year and say, why are you trading me mid-block, you know? But they do that for the academic progress of the students. Students were excited about it, and within those individual wind blocks, I got to see the differentiated instruction going on. I saw it everywhere, and I went, every room I went to, and I think I was directed to it, was ST math. So I've got to take into all the ST math rooms, I think that was a little bit on the principal's department. But it was fun to watch, and what really it showed me was, again, same standard, whether it was first grade, you know, counting to ten, whether it was fourth grade place value, whatever the issue was that they were being taught. Not only was the standard the same, but you could see it being taught in four or five different ways within one different classroom. That was exciting to me, that differentiation was exciting to me. And what it showed me is that people have done an awful lot of training, and we're seeing this. And the kids are actually aware of it on their computers. Because when they were showing me the ST math, I said, well, how do you know if you got the question right? And they said, well, GG runs across the page, right? And so that's how they know that they got it right. That's fun, even better, they actually move from island to island, so it's actually self-creating itself. As the kids do better, they get harder questions, and that's, that's what it's about. So again, real exciting stuff, but I think it speaks to all the work that we're really heading into this year. And you heard that, you know, at the middle school level, I was at the elementary level. But that to me was very exciting, and seeing the differentiation in action, and seeing the ease with which the kids are approaching the technology and using the technology was really exciting to me. So I have one more school left, Wampe Tuck, and then I'm meeting with all the principals and department heads individually for the rest of the week, just to kind of get caught up on it. It's been fun, it's been exciting, and it's been a real academic improvement for me. That's all I have, as far as I'm concerned.
Busy?
It's great.
Running around to all the schools. Fantastic, thank you very much. Update. Dr. Lynch?
Thank you very much, so I just wanted to link back for the teaching and learning updates. I just wanted to link back to something that Principal Beatty talked about, which was strong tier-one instruction. So in addition to the benchmarking and bridge cycle that Dr. Rabb talked about, last year, when I worked at the department chairs, we identified the need in principals for high-quality evaluation training. And so last spring, we interviewed a few professional development providers and landed on Research for Better Teaching. And this summer, we did three days in late August with Deb Reed from Research for Better Teaching. It enrolled all of our evaluators, thirty-one of them, in analyzing teaching for student results. And what it is, is really like an upgrade for the more traditional method of going into a classroom and like looking at the teacher and what the teacher is doing. And what analyzing teaching for student results asks the evaluator to do is really look at students. Where do you see evidence of learning? How is the teacher and the students with one another influencing the learning in the classroom? And so that was, it was great training, that all of us participated in, in, in August, and then we had another day this week to keep the course going, and it continues all the way until February. So it's been very exciting to work with our evaluators on that, to be transparent about the depth of training that evaluators do. We've invited the STA, so we really appreciate Kate Martin and Kate Peskatory being a part of that process to just be transparent that we take teacher evaluation and feedback very seriously. And one part of that process has been not just the formal training to give teachers feedback through Vector, our evaluation system, but also, how do you have a real conversation with a teacher and say, can you tell me more about this aspect of your teaching? Or how to listen to acknowledge that ninety-five percent of the time, an evaluator's not in the room, and to really learn from, from teachers and others. So it's been really great to participate in that. It's a lot of time for our principals and evaluators to invest, but they've done a great job with it. So just want to provide that update. It does check another box, which is training us all on the twenty-twenty-four teacher rubric that was negotiated and agreed upon through the, you know, the negotiation process. So there's a new rubric for teachers, and we had consistent slides that we shared with everyone at the beginning of the year to talk about some of the small changes. So that's new for this year, and so far, it seems like it's going very well. But just wanted to highlight the financial investment, the time investment, and just the energy investment that teachers and evaluators are doing to make progress with this course. So. Any questions about that, right?
Do you say? You said, so it's a multi-part course, so they meet four times total, and they've had, they have how many already? They've had three, and we have one more?
We've, we've had four, there are a total of seven.
Oh, wow, so that's pretty in-depth then.
Yeah, and I think that the benefit is that, so at this point, in the evaluation cycle, teachers are proposing goals, they're doing a self-assessment. If you're following the formal process, the first evaluation isn't required until November fifteenth. So at that time, later on in the course, we talk more about how to have the conversation with teachers, how to provide effective feedback, what to focus on. So it's seven total, with four have been completed so far.
Yeah. When you say thirty-one evaluators, so that is building principals, department chairs, who else?
Assistant principals, Dr. Bo Bear, myself, Dr. Rabb. And we've, we've had Markavias, our medco-director, be, be part of it as well. So anybody who.
Is applicable for non-teaching staff too?
Yeah, correct. Our nurse, Department Chair for Nursing is part of it as well. DESI-certified staff are required to evaluate using the system. So our Director of School Counseling participates in it as well. So basically, everybody who provides feedback, yes. I just had a few quick points. If you were paying attention in the media today, you saw that the state released MCAS results. There's, there's an article in The Globe, if you want to read that. I just wanted to update the committee that will provide the situat results and accountability information at our October twentieth meeting. So I'm happy to do that with our team. And DESI was excited to share their family portal and release an online version for families. However, they ran into some, they would like to slow it down.
Not excited.
But for situat families, we still will be providing our online access for all situat families. Thanks to the work of our manager of information systems, Mr. De Pross. We will have our individual student reports uploaded to Aspen, so families can see how their students performed. Those files don't land until tomorrow. It does take us a little bit of time to like parse them and separate them, but we're confident that we can get those out to families within the next two weeks, if they want to, so they can see how their students perform. Our history and social studies department has been working very hard, rolling out the new textbooks and online platforms. They're following the Curriculum Management Plan and Review Cycle. So that's just another highlight of what's been going on over the summer and this fall, as we continue to make progress with the Curriculum Management Plan and Review Cycle. Lastly, we're continuing our partnership in the math content area with our facilitator, Allison Mello. She worked in situat in the spring with our six-through-twelve teachers and our math specialists. She was here this, on August twenty-first, planning with Heather Allen and Tara Simonak to think about consistent PK to twelve professional development. She continues to, on September eighth, Allison visited six-to-twelve math classrooms with Tara Simonak to learn more about our district. And Allison will be facilitating full-day PD on November tenth for our Professional Development Day. We're really focusing on building our knowledge of the standards, having consistent language and models with students, knowing the difference between true mathematical thinking and answer-getting. And so I just wanted to provide an update that that work continues as part of our implementation of the program. And we know that it's primarily the work our teachers do with students that drives improvement. So we do have a really strong program that was adopted, and we're trying to follow that up with really strong instructional support through our leaders and through Allison. So those are just a few additional updates on teaching.
Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you so much for the in-depth update. It's helpful, very helpful. Okay, we have a vote on a surplus, Dr. Rabb.
Thank you, Mrs. Brandelani. So we simply have an old set of wrestling mats. Last year, we bought some new wrestling mats, they're awesome. These old ones are pitted, they're old, and they're rolled up, they really just need to go. One of the local youth programs apparently is interested in them. I'm not sure they'll still want them when they see them, but they could certainly offer them. But regardless, we need to get them out of this mall gym. So I would appreciate the committee's vote to take out the surplus.
Okay.
Make a, make a motion to approve the surplus of old wrestling mats.
Second. Limblom?
Yes.
I'm with you. Benwick?
Yes.
Brandelani?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Porowski?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Great. All right, we have our policy subcommittee update tonight. Lots going on here.
Yes, indeed.
Turn it over to you, Benwick.
All right. And Janice.
And Janice.
And Mr. Lynch.
And Mr. Lynch.
So as you guys might recall, last year, your fearless sub-policy subcommittee decided that we should all make an effort to become better acquainted with our policies. And so what we wanted to do this year was to assign ourselves a little chunk of policies to read before each meeting, and we would love feedback if this chunk felt the right size, and we can take that into consideration for future assignments. But the idea was just to be consistently reading, familiarizing ourselves with what, with what is there, so that we are more fluent with our own policies. Also, this will allow us to flag anything for review. So we, at the policy subcommittee, have kind of an ongoing list of like things that are emergent, that we have to deal with quickly, and then a other list of things like, oh, when we get to this, it would be helpful, a nice, nice to have, a nice to have list. So for today, the task was to read Policy AA through ACGB, which was a lot of legal-type language. This is probably one of the kind of longer sections, I will say, but it also felt, in a way, they went as a bundle. A lot of them have to do with non-discrimination policy. We actually have reviewed at least one of these, you know, very recently, and so it kind of felt like they went together, and it would be maybe helpful to just kind of keep them together, as opposed to reading separately. So that is why we have these on here. They're not per se to, you know, discuss any of them in depth unless anyone would like to, but I guess I would just open it up. But I guess I would just open it up for discussion of the process, any of the policies themselves, feedback on how it felt to read them, any of the above.
Is that a typo then? It says AA to ACBG. So is it supposed to be GB?
Correct.
That's what I was confused, because it's wrong on the agenda too. It says AACBG.
Oh.
So I was very, I wasn't sure how far I was supposed to go because I had no idea where, so.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I should have reached out to somebody, but I just tried, I just guessed what I thought it should be.
Okay. No, no, well, we will double-check that. That is one thing.
It's a lot of letters.
It is a lot of letters.
I'm not faulting anybody, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yep, that is, that's one thing about these policies, that's, they are-
It's a lot.
It's a lot of letters. Yeah, but it was AA, school district legal status, and then all the nondiscriminations through ACGB, which is the Title IX-
Sexual discrimination.
Sexual discrimination grievance procedure.
Okay, good.
Which is the one that we had actually updated last year. So of any of these, that's probably the most familiar to all of us. Anyone thoughts?
Well, I, I compared them to the mask policies. And some of them, I mean, I think we have more in that section. And before you even looked at the mask policies, the ACR, I was questioned whether or not that looks more like policy and procedure. And it does, so we could probably cut that one down.
Yeah, there's a whole section in there called complaint procedures.
Yeah, purely procedure.
Yeah. That actually brings me to a question I had, Janice, which was if there were changes we wanted to make, would we be then recommending that this policy subcommittee take-
Yes.
Take all those?
Yep. Yep, so if we wanted to, like, I would say that's an example of one that's not like an emergency, but it is an example of like, you know, these are meant to be supportive to us and to our district. And if there's policies in here that are so detailed and deep that they're not serving us, it doesn't make sense for us to have them. We should aim to simplify that and make them better. So that's an example of one we could put on our, our nice-to-have reading list. So certainly we can check that one out.
Can I just ask an operational slash administrative question? If we do make a change to one of these policies, how does it actually get updated to this database? Do we, because mask hosts it, correct? So how do we make that change?
Good question. We have a good relationship with Anne Marie at MASC. And when we update our policy, after the second reading, we take the document, we pay a hosting fee to them, we send it to them and they update our page fair, pretty quickly. So we have, we have it down, but that's one step at, at the end.
I think it's important, I've, I've been doing this a long time. I always try to figure out exactly what's going on in some cases. But I think it's important to identify that mask is our host. We have our own policies and they just happen to be the hosting organization, I guess. And we pay them, we pay them an annual fee to do that.
Yes.
And I think most districts do.
Yes, and what Janice referenced, which was also linked in the kind of assignment document, was the mask modeled policies.
Yeah.
Which I find very helpful. Because mask has a whole staff that does this as their full-time job. And so it's helpful to kind of compare sometimes because some of these haven't been updated in a very long time. And so sometimes it's helpful to look and see like, what is mask doing about this? Or what does theirs look like? And it's, it can be nice to sort of compare and write down exactly.
So if mask changes their policy, it doesn't directly change ours?
It does not, yeah, we just do a follow-up.
I think that that was in my mind years ago, that's what I thought happened, but it's not.
No, because they pass in their bulletin, they'll have like the day.
Because when they send those bulletins to our houses, they'll outline which policies they changed. So we can sort of keep track of that. But I don't know that we always have. As soon as we glance at that, sometimes it'll be like, oh, we have, we have to do this. But if it's not like an emergency, then I think it sometimes falls off the platter.
Right.
They do ones that aren't that.
Yeah. I, I also had a question that was related to what Janice pointed out about the one that had a complaint procedure. Because if you look at ACAB-r, that's all procedure. So I guess I'm just wondering when we do and don't include procedure. I don't know the answer, I'm just saying like, is even the one, civil rights grievance procedure? So I, I just want to be careful when we're taking out.
I was wondering if, if the designation of R means something? Because all the ones that have the R, I actually don't know this answer.
I wonder too, because they have-
Oh.
You thought what?
Revised.
Oh.
We don't usually put that though.
Because those have procedure.
All of those have that in common.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to take it out until we're sure that like it's supposed to be taken out.
I agree, no, this would be, we would look into it before we-
I think the policy subcommittee should look at it.
We will look at it. Thank you. And just as a, just for the public knowledge, I think important to mention, we always do a first reading. So it's an opportunity for us to discuss and the public to hear that we are discussing a policy. Then there's a period of time between our second reading, at which time we can vote to make the change. But there's always a space in between for a comment, which is typically two weeks. Typically two weeks.
I have another question on the ACE, nondiscrimination on the basis of handicap. Is that still the appropriate language for someone that has a disability? That feels very outdated, but I don't know, I'm not in that space, just wondering.
We can add that to our list as well.
I don't know if there's a more.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just don't know what, what is appropriate there.
Yeah, it references the Education of All Handicapped Children Act of 1975.
Yeah, so that's why.
Perhaps.
And again, I just want to make sure we're being inclusive and-
Yeah, I think that's a great, this is, this is why we're doing this. It's a perfect example of like, you draw great catches.
The mask policy, the mask policy says disability.
Yeah, see, that's a great catch, yeah. I also like when we update, I know that this has been done in different iterations, but I like when our updates say last updated.
Yes. You know, October 20- We started doing that two years ago.
Yeah.
So anything that's not dated is at least one to two years.
But just nice to know when was last planned stat. It just gives you a frame of reference.
Yes, for the future.
And then some say cross-reference, like, there's like links. And so it's like nice to see where it connects to others do not.
Other policies or masterful law.
Right. For master, exactly, yep. So it's sort of, there's some inconsistency, which I think would be nice to clean up as well. So this is like an ongoing daunting, I think, just like a-
Yeah, that's why we're doing it though.
Yeah, right.
And the ACA policy that we redid last year, the mask policy says that it reverts back to the 2022 version after the court ruling.
Yes, yes.
So all that hard work.
Right, yeah, right, yep.
So our version is 2024.
Yep, which was then undone.
Yes.
But it hasn't been in our policy yet.
But we didn't-
So you're saying we have to change that publicly?
Yeah, or officially publicly.
Okay, so.
But we have all the adopt, in this one, we do have our first reading, second reading adopted. Now we would need to adopt again to the older version.
Yep.
Yes.
True.
Okay. Which we probably should do that, actually.
Yep, that one gets like a little abstract. That gets bumped up, that's a little bit more.
Top of the list.
And then ACE.
It's not, it's a quick one though, because it just has to be more prestigious.
Yes, compliance, yes, thank you.
Okay. It's funny because we actually sped that up to be compliant or ahead of the game originally, which we should have been slow and then we wouldn't have had to read. Uncomply? It's like a penalty for being ahead of the game.
Anything else?
No, I think, I agree, I mean, I agree with everyone's general comments. It's almost like we just have to go through them all.
Yep. Any feedback on the process? Was this a too-large chunk? Did it feel okay? Any preferences on, we'll make sure we obviously cross-check the letters for the future, make sure those are accurate. But anything else, just in terms of spelled okay? We've already sent out the assignment for October 6th. But we can always adjust it if needed down. It was basically the, the rest of Section A. So it goes through mission statement through A, so AD through AE. Those are shorter. Some of them are shorter.
But now are you going to pull out all of these ones though?
So I have a list.
Because like technically all the little crop references and then all of the reviewed on-
We'll get there.
Pieces will have to be added.
I mean, we have a list. We'll keep you all posted. But like these ones, we're not going to bump like a really important policy.
Right.
Space, one of these, so these are kind of just going to be, we'll, we'll, we'll get to them as we get to them.
Yep.
It may take a while.
It's a forever task.
It is a forever task. When we get to the end, we'll start again.
It's like curriculum.
But not, it just keeps going.
Keep going.
Back to the top of the list.
Exactly.
Um, okay. Any other comments on this before we move on?
There's no way to tell on the mask website when the file was updated, right? I'm not missing something.
On our policies or on the mask models?
I'm on, sorry, on our policies. So like AD dash mission statement, like I don't know when that was updated.
So some will. So if you click on a random one, occasionally at the very bottom.
Oh, it'll say.
It'll say. It just depends who was-
Who was in charge when we did it.
Oh, I see that. So like the wellness policy was 2022. Okay, I see that.
So like about two years ago, someone started paying attention to that. Prior to that, there's-
Or some of them there are.
Every now and then you'll find a really old one.
Yeah, there's a couple, like mission statement, it doesn't have anything.
Exactly, yeah.
I feel like that would probably-
But then you occasionally run into one that does mention. This last update.
Yeah, but now that's a new practice that we've been doing.
Yeah, I see that, so.
Maybe we'll soon, got it, start, we'll start catching up.
That makes sense.
There's a lot of consistency with that.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's, it's a daunting task.
Oh, of course it is.
Keep chipping away.
Chip away a lot of time.
Future school committees will thank us.
They'll be like, who was in charge of 2025?
Someone will look us up.
Janice Maria, I don't know.
Wow.
What dedication.
Okay, anything else on this topic?
I would just add that I appreciate the time to go through these and maybe for our families listening, that these are as wordy and deep as these are. There are requirements inside of these processes, like for a Title IX, you know, discrimination or, you know, sexual harassment, that if the school is notified and on notice about that, that our grievance procedure is shared with the family or a staff member, that this language is incorporated into letters and things like that. So I would just want to make the point that these, these are policy and they can be like wordy, but they also go a long way to support people and, and that families do interact and staff members with these policies when allegations or challenges arise. So I just want to point out that it's a real part of people's experience that the school follows and spends a lot of time trying to do the right way because it's important. And it can, you know, people can hear these, these terms or be supported by like supportive measures and plans. And they're just real operational things. So I just want to make the point that, that that's why policy is important.
Yes, definitely, sure. It's one of our most important work, to be honest, so. I think that's one of the reasons why it's important for us all to be familiar with them too, to know where to point people if they need them and for us to know, you know, that they exist and make sure that they are accessible and make sense of them. But I know, that's why we had discussed earlier, a lot of these made sense to bundle them because they're very parallel, a lot of them. There's a lot of stuff in here that is there for a reason. Great. One of the policies that we did discuss at the last subcommittee was our school council policy. So we had been wanting to ensure that that policy was, we'd had a presentation from mask that suggested to us that we all needed to definitely be on our school councils. And that was not what we had understood when we last reviewed the policies. We did some investigating. We found out that our policy, as it exists, is actually fine. We are not out of compliance in any way. But we still talked about opening a conversation about us joining school councils in the way that we had in the past, which I was, this predates me, but I understand, was to join a school council of which we are not part of the school community and join as a non-voting member and join as like more in a liaison role in order to be able to kind of be that communication point between the school committee and what is going on in the individual school. So we had talked about potentially returning to that model without adjusting the policy. So that is what we wanted to talk about today.
I'll add to that too. We did a little research in our neighboring school committees. And our school committees in neighboring towns do follow this similar path. They liaison, they liaise with their school councils and they try to make it so that they do not sit on, if they have children in the district, they do not, they try to not sit on school councils in which they do have students in that school. And our mask friends agreed that process as well.
Yep, so the rule would be really to be listening and be able to bring back anything we hear that could be helpful and also to share if there's anything that, such as policy even. You know, like, oh, actually there's a policy about that. Let, let me help you understand that or show you where it is or anything like that. Kind of just serve in that, in more of that role and not be a voting member.
No, I just, I think that it makes sense that the challenge, which will be the same as, same now that it was then, is just making these meetings, which is kind of why we had this discussion originally. Because oftentimes they're learned after, well, in elementary case, or after elementary school. So it's kind of hard to get to these meetings. But I think it makes sense to, to be a liaison if you can satisfy that.
Yeah. I mean, I think it would be a best effort situation, you know?
Do what you can.
Do what you can. I think if the school leader knows that you're their person and they can keep you in the loop and you could reach out, you know, and could make the meetings or anything. The meetings are, minutes are now posted, I think, or agendas are posted at least.
Should be.
That they should be. So, you know, there are ways to kind of still be a support without physically being at every meeting. So I think it would just be sort of a do what you can. So for doing this, we have to figure out who's doing which school.
Do we want to, I'm not sure what the best method for that is. Maybe we can find out when, when each are meeting and-
That's a good idea.
Maybe come up with, um, you know-
I can start a schedule.
Yeah, I know, a schedule, yeah. That's helpful. We can sort of coordinate.
Yep.
Know where our own students are and each-
Yeah, it's a bit of a jigsaw, I think.
Yeah, a little bit of a jigsaw.
Every school would have cover.
Yeah.
So we can get there. Okay. So that's not really anything we need to-
No.
But that's a good next step.
And we also-
You're supposed, sorry, go ahead, Janice.
We also discussed in, in the subcommittee about expanding the number of times they meet.
Right.
Because we have like a minimum of four, which doesn't really seem like enough to do some of the work that we ask of them.
Yes, we did find out that other towns were meeting more frequently or other districts were meeting more frequently with their councils as well as other school community members.
Yeah, so I think that seems more operational because the policy just says minimum of. And so I think it's just sort of how it, how the work kind of gets parsed out in the year, so.
It's helpful, one of the recommendations I made to one principal last year was to form a working group. So there was a couple of specific things the school council wanted to work on, but it was tough to get her ready together, you know, eight times a year. So she formed a working group to work on that particular issue and a few times. And then they reported back to larger groups. So operationally, that was a way to expand the number of meetings but get some specific work done.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah. We also reviewed the, our bullying policy in our subcommittee. We determined that it is very aligned with mask policy currently. We didn't feel like there were changes that needed to be made to that policy right away. But we did talk again about the need for the review of the Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan and that work being taken on by a task force. And if that task force brings to light specific things that then we feel need to be adjusted in the policy, we could revisit again at that point. But it felt premature to make changes at this, at this point because the policy, it's another example similar to what we just discussed about the nondiscrimination stuff. It's quite procedural or not, not procedural, it's quite prescribed. And a lot of times that's for a reason. And we did, we were not, we were hesitant to jump into that without the guidance of a task force. But you want to ju, just give an update on where we are on that?
We haven't. Sure, we haven't. So there's two documents that we work on. One is the policy itself and then the other document is the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. The law right now requires that be updated every two years. So last year, or last time that was updated was 2023. So last year, or last time that was updated was twenty twenty-three. So it's a perfect opportunity now in twenty twenty-five to update the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. So that's what we'll be focusing on in the task force. And then as it may inform any changes in the actual policy, certainly the policy subcommittee can consider those. Um, it is work that is best run if we can find a consultant who can help us out with it. I did reach out to the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, right out of Bridgewater State. They've done a lot of this work with districts. Um, we're emailing back and forth, I haven't gotten a commitment for somebody. If, if we can do that, I'll reach out to our legal firm that we use, and they'll be able to help us find somebody. But I think it would be helpful to have an objective third party come in and help us with that task force, and help us with the work. Because the task force does require some background work, surveys to the community, find out what's happening in the community, and then looking at the plan itself right now. And this is certainly up for discussion or up for a future discussion. But I'm proposing a task force that would have representation from the school committee, uh, two parents, perhaps one elementary, one secondary, two principals, elementary and secondary, the assistant superintendent, superintendent, up to four teachers, two counselors, two parent professionals, and our school resource officers as well. And I think that would round out the group and allow us to really take a deep dive. I would want to have this work completed by, you know, late winter. No, I, I think, it doesn't, not going to take the whole school unit, because I think it's stuff I generally remember. To be able to present an updated bullying prevention intervention plan. So it's, and it's inconceivable, or absolutely, it's on top of our plans. You're welcome to edit. I think that was a really, uh, it's a good summary, Dr. Rad, and there's pieces of that that involve like the needs assessment and survey and collecting feedback. So everything that Dr. Rad said, and also opportunities, people are listening, it would be shared, the draft of it, so that we would collect feedback to make sure we're listening to staff, families, things like that, very public process.
Great.
Fantastic. That sounds like a smart plan to not, not change any policy before we have any sort of plan in place, we don't want to change a policy before we speak to any stakeholders or anyone that's in our district first.
I just have a question on the, I guess, the prevention, prevention plan. Is that something that, um, teachers deliver to students in terms of what bullying is, how to prevent it, how to minimize it, is that kind of what it is?
There's a small piece of it, I think, and I'll let Mr. Lynch give a more full answer, but I think it's more about the procedures of how we actually handle individual bullying cases. So when they're reported to the principal, what are the documents, what are the forms that we use? How do we make sure that the processes follow very, so it's the procedure that backs up the policy? Yeah, that's, yeah, that's part, that's important part of it, is how people report. And then also, how do we educate staff about that process? Like if somebody tells, a student tells the teacher, the reporting processes, our, our school is on notice, so how critical it is for the teacher to share that with an administrator? So that piece of it, professional development for staff. And then also making sure that our PD for students is aligned with that as well. Like we need, you need a research-based program to share with students that helps them, you know, make progress, like pro-social behaviors, how they should respond, how they respond when adults aren't around, so that's, that's a piece of it as well. An example, that's the second step program. Thank you.
All right, we got to move on to, okay. The final thing is we do have a first reading of a policy that the policy subcommittee proposes that we should change. This is policy KCD, Public Gifts to the Schools. So we did discuss this last year, and then I think it fell off the table somehow. It was probably just not as needy as some of the other policies. But I believe that this was changed actually in Massachusetts general law at some point. Again, this is an example of one of our policies that's undated, and so it's unclear as to when it was last reviewed. Our policy says that the superintendent will have authority to accept gifts and offers of equipment for the schools in the name of the situational school committee. And the mask model policy says, in accordance with state law, all grants and gifts of the district shall be reviewed and accepted by the school committee before expenditure reviews. So this was a long discussion at the mask conference last year. And part of it is that there are legal reasons why we need to be aware of and accepting anything that is coming into schools and even classrooms. So I think that's why Massachusetts general law was, was changed. I actually think it has to do with the rise of crowdfunding platforms. There was just suddenly more ways that new things are coming into schools. And so I think this was a response to that, sort of say like, there has to be some sort of oversight as to what is being accepted and brought to the conference. Yeah, that was kind of the impetus for the change. So we're just a little bit behind the eight ball, I think, in, in this. And most of the time we do follow this, a lot of big gifts, we're always accepting, you know, one hundred dollars or, you know, an item. But this, I think, is meant to be more of a blanket over even some of the smaller things. I know that other school committees will often do these as a consent agenda, so we are not voting on every little thing. But it can be, you know, we can think about what the right cadence and procedure would be. But I know other school committees would maybe have like an itemized list they can review, and then just say, yep, this all looks good, and we, we vote and move on. But it is at least offering that step that we are supposed to have been taking.
How does policy, and this might be off tracks, we could not entable it. How does, how do these gifts differ from when a physical education teacher puts out a call for donations? Or a second grade teacher says?
They don't.
Don't.
They're not supposed to.
Okay.
That's exactly what this is meant to cover.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. There was a whole conversation at, at the mask conference about a district that said, yeah, this is how we ended up approving pumpkins on our agenda, until they realized that they could just do a consent agenda. But they, it does, you're supposed to really be tracking.
Now, is it different if a PTO gives to a school?
This includes, it includes.
It should be PTO as well, okay.
Thank you for saying that.
That's, that's gonna like take some educating and culture change.
It'll be a change, yeah.
It'll be a change. I'm glad, I mean, I think it's good.
I, I, just as an example, I, I'm meeting with all the PTOs in the new job. And one of the things, what I did with Cushing last week, you know, they gave you their budget, they gave you their first two or three months of spending. And so it's actually relatively, not easy, but the information's there. It's just a matter of asking.
It's just a matter of sharing, you know?
And they're excited to share. And I think part of it is, yes, it's compliance with the law, but it's also, let's share the exciting things that the PTOs are doing. Let's share the exciting things that people are doing. Um, and I have a tracker that I use in a prior district that speaks to that consent agenda, where it gives you that total at the bottom of the page. And we can, once this is all approved, we can start making the standard agenda.
Yeah. So this, to me, is a, you know, a matter of compliance, just brings us to.
It also just makes good policy for equity and transparency and all these things we worry about with kids not being able to afford certain things, so, yeah.
So all the, all the fundraising that PTOs do, we'll have to go through, we'll have to approve it?
Yes.
I think that.
Does that include, like, high school sports, too?
Yes.
It's depending, I'll, I'll be working with everybody.
Yeah.
Like I said, the tracker is really cool, it, it makes it very clear to the committee on a weekly basis. But it's, but most people want to celebrate what they're doing, right? So if it's a boosters club, donate something, well, I want to know, you know? Um, even if they donate a banquet, I mean, I don't need to know every single thing they bought, but if they say, hey, twenty-five hundred dollars for a banquet for the team, well, it's good to know.
Yeah, right. Because technically, we, we have oversight over those things. But if we don't know they exist, then how can we have oversight over them, you know what I mean? So like, it's just been a gray area now, you know?
I have a poet, I actually have a poet, too. With my old hat and my new hat, you know, but I think, I think it works. Most people, properly explained, they understand, we're about celebrating, working together, you know? Yeah, that's a little something, so celebrate what you know.
Yep. Yep, so we'll have a second reading on October sixth, right? Yep.
Correct.
Um, and then we can move forward with changing, so that's a, a thing that we are in favor of it, but. But, excellent. It's me?
Yours is great.
Okay. But for our policies, we have an approval of minutes. Two sets tonight, September eighth and sixteenth.
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from September eighth to September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Second.
All right. Edwick?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Rokoski?
Yep.
Gates?
Yes.
Rendelini, yes. All right. All right, for tonight, nothing?
No.
In backup, okay? Something, um, correspondences. Correspondences today. Um, other business that may properly come with the committee. I think today, any future agenda items? Anyone? All right. Take a motion to adjourn, then?